You're good to go Kathleen.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 25th Workshop of the Village Board. The Deputy Mayor and I are remote, keeping our seasonal germs to ourselves. But we are in compliance with Open Meetings Law. There is a physical quorum at Village Hall at 85 Main Street. So, welcome to everybody. Tonight is a, we have a few bits of business. And then we'll be continuing conversation on Chapters 126 Vehicles and Traffic and 127 Residential Parking. First item on the agenda is the opportunity to request a vote to mod or addify, add or modify agenda items. I would like to request to add discussion of the correspondence we received today from, or perhaps yesterday, from Senator Rollison regarding Anchorage on the Hudson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we'll drop that down under minutes. Next is announcements. Any announcements? None from Jeff? Okay. So we'll move into Board Discussion on amended Chapters 126 and 127. I would like to open with a motion to close the public hearing. We had an in-person and online vocal verbal public hearing last week. And then we kept the record open for written comments for another week. We received a good number of responses, which we have all seen and read and will discuss tonight. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on these chapters.
That good?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I want to do a really quick review of how we got to where we are this evening. The public process for the development of Chapter 126 and 127. As Eliza pointed out last week, as many years of work by an appointed Committee of Residents and Trustees. That committee handed in its final report in August 2021. It was accepted by the Board seated at the time, but it was not implemented. This Board, all of us who are on this call, all of the, I guess, all the women who are on the call, has taken on the task of operationalizing metered parking and resident parking permits. There are a lot of moving pieces to consider, and it's taken some time. Public comment has been taken at multiple points along the way, in three sessions held by the Working Committee. In the adoption hearing for the current 126 and 127 in 2021. In an information session held by this Board last winter. And then the Officer in Charge and I had focused neighborhood meetings with different resident groups around the resident parking district, particularly High Street and Halane Street residents and Stone and Railroad residents. And then we all came, we came back together, did further refining, made recommendations to Trustee Starbuck, who developed the final text. And then last week, we had the public hearing. And all of the meetings, all of the comments that were submitted, accepted through tonight. So now we take all of that feedback, the body of feedback. And we discuss it and we debate modifications tonight. And then the comment is also going to be part of the public record. In tallying the responses, we got the most comments were related to cost and to that format of the permit, whether it be a tag or a sticker. But I think it's important, having read all of this comment, that we reiterate a few points of what this legislation is not intended to do. So it is not intended to address resident parking all across the village at this time. This is Phase 1, which includes most of the streets from the riverfront to 9D and between Northern and Wall. It's not meant to solve every household's parking challenges or particular needs. No legislation can do that and address each particular need. It's not meant to create specific spots assigned to households. It's not meant to guarantee a street's parking space for every resident in the RPP area. It's not meant, and this is important, it's not meant to make life for residents and their visitors more difficult. That's why we're going to talk about some modifications tonight. And it's not meant to keep other villagers out of this area. What it is meant to do is reserve areas that are privileged for residents on our busiest streets. Just like now, there will be competition for street spaces even after the RPP goes into place. But now, the competition will be only among those who live in the district. There may not be enough spots all the time for everyone who drives a car and lives in the district to park on their street. But your chances of finding a spot will be a lot better with visitors out of the mix. So there are some decision points for us tonight. Eliza's going to lead the conversation. But let's see, those center around operating days for the RP, for the Resident Parking Permit Program eligibility criteria, number of permits, price of permits, form of the permit. A few things related to temporary permits and replacement fees, and then talking through the implementation timeline. Just to hit a couple of the frequently asked questions briefly, there were some questions about, we have proposed a bus route. There's a lot of consternation around the village about tour buses on tiny residential streets and getting stuck in the chaos it creates, getting them out of areas they shouldn't be in and can't fit in. We've created a triangle on the state roads and Fair Street, which is a truck route. With the intention that buses can go either direction on that, on that route, and yes, we will have to have signage to direct buses there. And we will, it's going to be a process of educating the tour companies, and there are going to be mistakes for a while. But now, at least we have the capacity to ticket, which we didn't before. The police didn't have any ground to stand on. Now they do. And so that's, that would be helpful, and tour companies will learn over time. There was a question about, will there be a specific stop on Fair Street? No, there will not. There are not specific stops anywhere in the village right now. Buses pull over where they can and drop people off. Most frequently, they're using the 15-minute parking spaces. Or the pedestrian areas, the pedestrian crosswalk areas. It's not ideal, for sure. But we're, this is starting to attack the problem, narrowing down the opportunities. There isn't physical space for actual stops on Fair Street right now. But we imagine that this will continue similarly to what it has been, but on fewer streets, meaning that a bus will find a place it can pull over, disembark. And then it's going to have to move and park on Chestnut Street, at the spur of Chestnut Street. So attempting to reduce where buses can go and where they have to park. So that's a start, and we'll see where we go from there. There were questions about worker parking. We anticipate following the proposal of the Parking Committee from 2021, which was that the area, the municipal lot along the Boulevard at Kemble, along the Marathon site, will be reserved for worker parking. And yes, that does include visitor, village employees. This is, everybody's got to give up. I park on Main Street sometimes. I'm going to have to walk from home or park on Kemble Avenue 2, all of us. If we all, we all have to be in it together. So people who work on Main Street, including village workers, will need to either walk or park on the Boulevard unless they have an ADA placard. Okay. And then visitor parking, we'll talk about this more. There has been a lot of consternation. Just wanted to ask people to reflect on what it's like getting a visitor to park by your house on a weekend already. Our goal is not to make it worse. Our goal is to try to make it better by having public spaces available. We'll talk about it more, but I think everybody needs to take into account, please, what the conditions currently are. And it's pretty rare to be able to park for anybody, be able to get a resident, excuse me, a visitor in on a busy street during the day in the high season. So I think if we look at what our streets are like during the week and in the evenings, we have a better sense of what our non-peak hours are like. We're honing in on those peak hours when parking is at its premium. Okay, Eliza, go crazy.
Oh, okay. So the, do you want me to go onto the implementation process, or should we do the options for modification first?
I think focus on the areas that where we need to have discussion first.
Yeah, that sounds good. Alright, so our current proposal is taking into account whether you have a driveway on the property or not. And assigning a number of permits per unit based on whether they have a driveway or whether there's multiple residential units on the property. So the maximum that anyone can have is two, and then, and and in many cases, in cases where you have a driveway, it's one, and cases where there's multiple residences on the property, it's one for each residence. And we've set the price permits currently at 75 for a single permit. And if you get two, then it's 50 for the first and 75 for the second. And that's with stickers. And we've made that so it's seven days a week from nine to six that it's resident permit parking only. So a couple options to address the issues of how many, hang tag first, let's talk about that. So a lot of people asked for hang tags for the convenience. I understand the convenience factor is really important if you have two cars and they're constantly switching them between your driveway and in front. To only get one sticker would be an inconvenience because you'd always have to plan to park that car on the street and the other car in the driveway. The problem with the hang tags is if someone loses them, what if your teenager loses it? And then you come to the clerk and ask for a second one in earnest, and you get it for a replacement. And then you find that second one. And you want to, like, might as well use it either on your own car or give it to somebody you know who could use it, like a merchant that you're friends with. Either way, leaves a lot of room for abuse. And, and we don't have the enforcement capacity for officers to go from hang tag to hang tag to make sure that every hang tag is still current and eligible. So one option might be, if we were to take the hang tag route, would be to make a replacement fee for lost hang tags at a premium price. So that if somebody does decide that, hey, I can sell my lost hang tags on the black market, then at least it's at a price that that discourages that really, and discourages people from losing their hang tags. So, so with that proposal, I would suggest like a replacement fee somewhere in the $200 to $400 mark. If hang tags is our first priority and we just absolutely feel that residence convenience is our most important thing to preserve, then I would propose that. Now, I think the other big concern was how many permits each unit can have. And if you can only have one, having to, whether it's putting on one car and having to be committed to that car is a difficulty. And there were people who said they have more than one car and more than one driving adult in their household, which is totally reasonable and normal and fine. So another proposal I would suggest we consider is rather than this sort of driveway factor, just provide every residential unit with the ability to, eligibility to get two resident permits rather than one or two. Let everyone get two. It kind of takes away the like discussions that we hear and all the concerns. It's kind of a more fair, like, everybody gets two. Take it or leave it. You don't have to buy both. You can, you can purchase one if you only need one. And I would say if we were going to do that route, I would suggest lowering the price of all permits to $50. So that then addresses, you know, the residents are concerned that $75 is too much for their households on top of their property taxes. So this would reduce that cost. And also give them more flexibility to have, you know, two, rather than a hang tag between two cars that switches. Just buy two for the two vehicles and you can swap them around as you like. So that's another possibility. And then a, another thing to consider with either of those options would be, because convenience on the weekdays of visitors coming and going was a big call out. So in answer to that, I think Dar Williams made a suggestion that we only make the permits active, the resident parking permits active when Main Street meters are active. So that would be Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays from nine to six. And then weekdays, now if you have the electrician coming, if you have homies coming, it's free for anyone and you're not, they're not, it's the same way it is now. So that's, that's another option, and that would, that would address the inconvenience of having to come to the clerk for five days of the week to get your temporary permits when visitors come or electricians come or whatever, contractors, homies.
And it hits the busiest days. There were actually several folks who made that recommendation along with Dar.
Right. So those are kind of the options that I, you know, would love to hear feedback and add your thoughts on. You ready?
Go ahead. I like the option two of the two per, and $50 for everybody. And, and I think we did have some passing comments about after we get them all out, if people actually do need a third permit, maybe we'll have enough wiggle room to do that. So that, I like not tying it to the driveway. It'd be nice if people used their driveways, but maybe they can save it for the guests. And, and while I'm a little concerned about what used to be a lot of train commuters, I don't know that we still have them. I'm a little on the fence with that. I could be convinced, but I'm not convinced yet, that just doing it on the weekends. But if we only do it on the weekends and we see it's not working, we can always still turn it over.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't tell, someone else talking?
Go ahead.
Catherine, I, I share that concern as well, particularly during the busy season, you know, being on Main Street every day. The village has people wandering the streets through the week. And Thursdays are the new Fridays, and those two days of the week are busy too. But, you know, this is all an experiment. We can certainly try it in this iteration and see how it goes. It, it does, if, if, if we're prioritizing ease for villagers, that is one way to do that, by, by making the the weekdays off days. But folks will have to be open to the idea that, that may not always stay the same. It may be that we find that Thursdays and Fridays were all week are becoming packed. I'm open to trying it, is my point, but I'm skeptical.
Exactly where I am.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, one of the major drivers for this is the metered parking and like rationalizing Main Street and getting revenue from tourism. And that's just a weekend.
Yeah.
That's just a weekend piece. And then I think there's been another goal of trying to make parking and more like better for residents. But we proposed something, and we heard back mostly that that didn't make it better for residents. And so in terms of using their streets on the weekdays or for their guests. And so I hear that, you know, I think, so I guess I would be with that in mind, we can protect, we like preserve the goal of Main Street by creating a resident parking district on the weekends. And then you know, and then I guess we open it up. I would be in favor of opening it up during the week. And then, yes, and then we see whether whether that's an issue. And then I, I'm in favor of the two for all residents using a sticker because I think it's just like kind of simplify and at the $50 price. I think that responds to a lot of people's concerns. If we have a sticker and you can park on the street during the weekdays, I feel like we're addressing some of the reasons that people wanted to have a hang tag. And I shared the concerns about hang tags. So yeah, I guess I'm mostly in favor of two, to be.
Beeps?
Yep, because it leaves me. So I like option two. I am, I'll do the easy ones first. I think sticker for certain. I think Laura brings up an excellent point. I think it's easier for us to to kind of maintain a sense of like, you know, the look of it. Each year it changes. It's a static thing. So I think definitely a sticker. I think two per household is fair. I think that, you know, the tie to the driveway was, was definitely creating a lot of consternation for people, and I think that's a totally fair thing. I mean, it would affect me as well. And I kind of thought about like, what, what would we do with two cars in a driveway? So having that flexibility, I think, is right on point and answers a lot of people's concerns. As to the price, I still think that 75 is, is a fair amount. I mean, I was just thinking, you know, that's like $6.25 per month. You know, that's nothing. I'm not saying it's it isn't a change, but it's a change that will affect all of us. It's an us thing. This will affect me too. I have to get a permit as well. So I think keeping it at 75 is, is reasonable. But I can, you know, I hear that other people are, are thinking that 50 is, is more fair and you know, if that's, if that's the way you guys want to go, I'm, I'm open to that. But I, I do, I just want to say for the record, the, the cost to me was completely fair considering the amount of enforcement, the signage, the stickers, the management of the process. These things cost money. It doesn't just come for free. You know, this is labor. This is increased labor. This is different labor. And so that has to be paid for some way. So either we're going to pay for it with a permit, or it's going to come up in another way when we find out, you know, that it may potentially cost more than we had anticipated, and now we have to raise something else. So I just think that's something that people should consider, and it is a price that we all will pay. It's not an us or them, it's all.
Well, I think it's important though to clarify that this, this will work the same way water and wastewater.
Yes.
We pay our taxes and we pay water and wastewater separately, and we pay them by use. And right now, in this, in this proposal, the people in the densest, busiest parts of the village are purchasing a privilege, right? It's set aside.
Yes.
That, that makes space available for them, and that space being available requires enforcement.
Yes, agreed. And also just something that I was thinking about as I, as I read people's comments too. You know, there's kind of this perception that like you bought a house and therefore you are automatically given a space in front of your house to park your car. Like, it's a right. It's not a right. It's a privilege. You know, we all share, we share the roads, we share the streets. Do I get annoyed when I can't park in front of my house? Absolutely. But I also understand that I don't own that space. And so, you know, it's, it's going to be a change of, of thinking and of use, and it will affect us all. So I, I just, you know, want to make those points. And finally, to the days of operation, I think it's a, it's a great call out to think about doing it just for the weekends and holidays. For sure, that takes away the burden of, you know, work being done at someone's house, a friend coming over, unexpected things that happen during the week, not having to worry about that. And not, you know, adding the burden to, to all of us during the week because it's really about all the people who come to visit on the weekends and holidays. So I, I, I would be, I would be open to that for certain. I do think that, you know, when I think of the weekend, as you noted, you know, it really is, at this point, you know, we used to think that like the season was just like the fall, right? And, and, and some, and summer, but truly like we are becoming like a full year-round situation. I mean, there's people on streets all the time now. It does get quieter in the winter. I, I, you know, note that, but I think you know, maybe, maybe weekend is Friday through Sunday and holidays. I don't know. Or maybe it is, at some point, maybe it will be Thursday as well. But I think to start, maybe we just, we just do the, the weekends for now and see how that, how that works out. So I think that answers all all the changes that we discussed.
Address a couple of those things, those points, tweaks?
Yes.
One thing is sort of Kathleen mentioned how these permits are paid for use. So if your household only needs one permit, okay, and, and you're on a tight budget, and you can get away with one, then, okay, you get the price, the $50 price that so many residents are, are saying that is important to them. But if you want the convenience, then you're paying $100 for two permits. So you can swap your cars in and out and, and park on the street or not. But in that way, where we used to, we were going to only get $75 for everyone who had the driveway because they could only buy one permit at 75. Now we will likely get 100 from those, from those residents. So that's one thing to consider, like in terms of the revenue to support this system, it might actually balance out.
And from a administration, at least from the clerkets, hopefully someone coming once applying for both permits. And so there might be like some reduced implementation costs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I, I think residents really should know that the cost of implementing this program is far higher than the price that we're charging for these permits. The time that the clerk will be spending like administering this, the amount we've paid in signs, and, and if we're considering swapping this, like doing a a weekends and holidays permits signs instead of what we had originally proposed, which was seven days, seven days a week of preserving resident parking. That'll probably change. Like, this is the softball version where we, we start easing into this program, which I, I'm not against. I, I like the idea of starting soft and, and like just doing the same time as the meters. And it's, it's likely that we may need to expand our meter program days of the week to be Thursdays and Fridays through Sunday and holidays. So this may cause us to reprint signs repeatedly. And that means we have to pay our highway department, we have to pay for the signs themselves. It's, this is a huge cost for administering it. So, so what permits we're paying for, it does not cover the administration costs. It's, it's going to help offset those costs. And I think the Main Street meters will help support the, the administration costs in the long term. Catherine, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah. I was wondering maybe if we're going to let them have two and we're not dependent on driveways and whatever, we could come to a middling ground price of $60 for the permits instead of 50. So it's not like 75 for one and 50 for the other.
What do you think about that idea?
I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
My preference is still 50. I think maybe others disagree with this. I think, um, uh, maybe others disagree with this, but I feel like we want to go into this as like a village that everyone is kind of like. Okay, we can do this, like we can buy into it and I think if there's a lot of resentment over. A small, like compared to the total cost of revenue of this project. If there's a lot of resentment and pushback on it, I think it, it could cause problems and I think we want to show that. I think that, that this is another way to show that, that we're listening to people and I totally appreciate.
No, going in that, just to adjust tweets.
That's my, my preference.
Five was where she wanted to be, I was going down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I just, I'm wondering if we shouldn't. I'm wondering if we shouldn't start at Friday. It's so dense on Fridays already.
Start the resident permits or metering as well.
Both.
I like the idea of metering on Fridays.
All together.
I think. I don't know about, it's, it has the ship sailed on.
We're gonna have to reprint signs anyway. Um. If, if we make any of these changes.
Yeah.
So whether we make one or two changes, it'll be the same amount of time.
I thought that the meter permit, the meter part were like, look at the app for. That's right, for one.
Yeah, that's right, so we won't have to reprint those, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's a good idea to do Friday and capture more.
I mean.
Um, more revenue.
I would say at minimum, i- if I were, if I were making the decision alone, I'd do. Thursday through Sunday and holidays, but I'm wondering if we can find a compromise at Friday, I just see how, how crowded we are. On Fridays and it's not just for the fall.
Sorry, it would be every day.
Yeah, but we're not doing it alone and, um, we've closed public comment, so I think that if we're doing dramatic changes, um, we should maybe reconsider that. Um, but I think Friday is, uh, given the environment and the state of things and, um. Uh, I, I don't think, I think that what we'll be doing a year from now is saying, oh, we should have added Thursday and Friday or we should have added Friday. So doing it now is not a terrible idea, um. Let me just tell you the difference of.
Do others have thoughts on? Thursday and Friday? Or Friday and/or?
As I said, I would take them all, so I, I'd be go with Thursday and Friday.
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking mostly of preserving that parking on Fridays.
Um, the potential difference in revenue.
I'm not thinking of it so much from a revenue perspective, although that's, that's valuable, I'm thinking more of, of parking convenience. On those days that are already crowded, I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna get lighter from here is the point. Maybe we, maybe we can go down and, well, before we vote on each thing, there's a couple more things to discuss, I think. Do we have a, before we vote, do we have sort of a straw on Thursday and Friday? If our folks inclined that way, I know Catherine said she is.
We'd support Friday, but not Thursday, at this point, I just, I just think that we don't know how it's gonna affect Main Street, our rates are. Four dollars high and, and residents have called that out, um, you know, we don't wanna. Uh, have a really strong harmful effect on Main Street on.
Oh, 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 I see what you're, I see you're, you're talking about now, lo, keeping Main Street open for local people.
Yeah, Friday is a local popping day, so it's.
Yeah, right, that's a good balance, I didn't, I didn't understand what you meant before, but now I do, that, and that's a good balance.
So Eliza, are you saying to include Friday or not to include Friday?
I would be willing to include Friday, but not Thursday.
Not Thursday, yeah, I think that's a good compromise.
That's fair.
Eliza, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I can't, they're really tiny right now, so I can't tell who's moving, um, so with, with taking away the driveway, sorry?
Weaps didn't say whether she wanted Thursday and Friday or just.
Alright.
Oh, I might, I'm not muted, right, okay.
Right, you're not muted.
I would say, um. I would say. I hear you on maybe holding on Thursday for the moment and doing Friday, adding Friday.
Alright, so can we, um. Vote on that?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Vote on each of these things that you've put forward, Eliza.
Metering.
I just, I have a question before we start voting on these items, what, what is, what happens now that we've detached driveway from number of permits, right? We've separated that out, what becomes of, how are we handling? Rental units, it's still. One per legal rental unit?
No, I would give everybody two.
Two per legal rental unit?
Two per residential unit on any, of, of any sort, it, that's legal, um, on the properties.
And before it was one, right? One per rental unit?
Yeah. Again, it's the flexibility people want to be able to move their car in and out, because most apartments, I assume have. Driveways or parking lots, like Main Street apartments, most of them have parking lots in the back where they park, um.
Yeah, I mean, there are four or a few that don't, um.
And I, and I would say on, at nighttime, if you walk Main Street to see how many cars are parked there, I, I. All these streets at night, because that's the best representation of how many resident cars are on the street. And there's only twenty cars on Main Street in this district at nighttime.
That's, that's a good point, that's a good point.
Twenty cars added to what's over there and on, on the side streets, it's only like sixty-five, seventy percent filled. At, at night, so there's room to absorb those twenty. Um, and if they aren't there now, why would they be there more just because we gave two permits?
Well, and I don't see how you, I don't see how you can be equitable if you, if it isn't the same.
Yeah. And I, let's also, I think, um, it's maybe semantics, but just to be like really clear on the language, it's like up to two permits. Not that, I mean, you know.
Not that you automatically hand out.
Right, however many you want, but up to two max, yeah, good point. Um. Okay, so, um, should we go through the list of items that were, uh?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Um, metering on Main Street from Friday through Sunday plus holidays. And then, so that's one point, um, uh, I, uh. Proposed that, what is the word?
Motion.
Make a motion to accept, uh, metering on Main Street Friday, so, but Friday through Sundays and holidays.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Okay.
Do you wanna add, I'm sorry, do you wanna?
Oh.
For the meters, the time?
I would leave it as, as we proposed, so that's from.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, that's from ten AM to six PM on Main Street. We made the RPP nine AM to six PM. And that's really so locals can get coffee in and out and. That's, shops open and it gets busy on Main Street anyway.
So I would make a motion to, I would make a motion to, to match. Um. Metering and RPP in this way to, to require resident parking permits. That they be in effect Friday through Sunday and holidays from nine AM to six PM.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
I'm confused.
Yeah, I get confused too.
So Eliza, Eliza put forward a motion on meters from ten to six, I put forward RPP Friday. Through Sunday and holidays, nine to six, that, that's when it is in effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Okay, you take it from there, Eliza, it's easier with you because you can see people's faces better, actually, can we stop? Do we need to keep sharing the screen, are we good with it?
Yeah, we can let that go.
I can see you guys better. There we go, now I can see people's eyes.
Alright, so, um, next motion is to, um. Adjust number of permits per residential unit on the each property, um, to be two permits per unit. Um, on each property, um, and make that just universal and take out the driveway element.
I just modify that to say up to two.
Up to two, yes, thank you, tweets.
Sure.
And that includes, includes rental, legal rental units.
Including all rental units, so multiple unit properties, single family properties, two family properties, we don't care about.
Legal. Let's add the word legal, yeah.
Yes, legal's important, okay, uh, so Tweeps submitted a motion, do we have a second?
We're seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Okay, keep going, Eliza.
And the last one is, um, to adjust the price per permit to be fifty dollars per permit. Um, which is a universal flat price. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Okay.
Uh, one little point that we didn't really discuss was if you need a replacement, for instance, um, uh, a landlord. Who has a tenant who moves out in August and scrapes their, you know. They have their, their tags, their stickers scraped off and they need a replacement stickers for their new tenants, right?
But that's a new, that's a new purchase that gets prorated.
Okay. Um.
We, we can, we can, we can, I would imagine in that scenario, I'm, I'm asking, I can't see Jeff, but I'm asking Jeff a question. We've prorated purchase. Um. Can we, can we refund unused through the year or does that become an administrative nightmare, just once it's paid, it's paid?
Well, it is an administrative nightmare.
Yeah.
Um. All around then on accounting too, because then we're gonna, we're gonna be cutting especially with rental units. We'll be cutting checks all the time and it's.
I, I think that's a.
I would say non-reimbursable then.
Yeah, once it's paid, it's paid, if you use it throughout for the year, great, if you don't, that's on.
Prorating, I think, is fair, if someone doesn't.
Prorating is, is fine, but giving back money for something unused on the permit is not.
You're right.
Um, a question I have is whether somebody buys a new car mid-year.
Yeah, so that's the replacement tag, I think, scenario, no?
Yeah, that, that's a replacement scenario, yeah.
You scrape off the old one and bring it to us or show us a picture of a damage, of, of its being like removed?
With a new registration.
There needs to be some new proof and then, yeah, with the new registration, they could get a, a replacement tag, so would we. Charge them for a whole new one or like a five dollar for the price of the sticker?
Then the five dollar.
Replacement, like, and what if your kid peels it off your sticker or, or your window or something, so, so I think just to put in there that we have a five dollar replacement fee. If you need to replace your sticker.
Sure.
Yeah, did we vote on the sticker?
We, oh, oh, we didn't vote on the sticker.
The sticker is not changing though, it was sticker in the proposal.
Okay, so, um, then I make a motion to, uh, make a five dollar replacement fee for any stickers that need to be replaced.
Okay, uh, may I amend that motion? With, with, um, demonstration of demise sticker. Whether it's a photograph or, or, um, a new, a new vehicle registration or something that lets us know we're not handing out another ticket, another parking permit.
Right. Um, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed?
Nope.
Okay.
Alright, great, great.
Is that all the things?
Those are all the major decisions that we had tonight for, um, the, based on the comments from the public. That, that addresses in the sort of most central and fair kind of giving everyone something and having everyone give something. You know, the people who wanted hang tags won't be as happy, but now they can get two stickers rather than one.
And, and it's only on weekends, on Fridays.
Right, and it's more convenient for people who don't want to deal with this all week long.
We should also note the location of the sticker.
Oh, yeah.
He's changed.
So, so I did confirm with Officer Burke, the location of the sticker has to be either. On the backside window, um, preferably the driver's side. Or the bumper, and I think that's really up for us to decide, um, I think Officer Burke prefers a window.
He does prefer a window, I was just looking at the text he sent before the meeting.
Yeah, so, and that makes sense to me, it's easier to see and people have bumper stickers all over their cars and. It's nothing.
It's a driver's side back window?
The back, back passenger window or the back trunk window, but it can't be the back.
It has to be.
Not the rear view and it can't be the front windshield, it has to be the back side window on, on the driver's side.
Driver's side.
I have a picture for this, but I don't have it here right now.
Make sure that it gets communicated out that way.
Yeah, I'll update the, the like general presentation with all of these changes, so we can. Put it out on the website again, so people can check it, that's still the Cliff Notes, it's easier than looking through the code.
Wouldn't I want to make a, our external sticker then, um, for tinted windows?
Good point, and for little children.
Yeah.
Remarked on a kid picking at the sticker.
Did you say?
No, no, tinted windows in New York.
Yeah, but people do.
There's varying degrees.
Yeah, and we have a sticker that you can see, like, I have a question, parking so exterior sticker.
The furthest back to the trunk, yeah.
There's an adorable sports car on Main Street right now, but it doesn't have a back windshield and I looked at it and thought, where, where will they put their sticker, but.
We'll be on the back.
Convertibles too, though, you know, someone parks a convertible with their windows down.
Yeah, they're gonna have to roll the window up, I guess.
We can't solve any scenario in a code. Don't understand how someone doesn't have a back window, but, okay, um.
I see, he has one, you know, two windows, driver doors, that's it.
Right, well. The farthest back passenger holding window.
That's right.
Great.
I can figure it out.
Okay, do you want to look at implementation process and timeline?
I do, because I, I also have a question for you, because, um, in addition to all, everything that needs to happen. With the public and on the street, we need time to work with the clerk to, to get the internal systems organized for how, how we're gonna. Track these permits, um, and I don't know if you've, if you've got it as part of this. Flowchart, that piece in the flowchart, but talk us through.
Down there, uh, uh, check and treasurer and admin, the bottom half.
Sell the right part. Yeah, okay.
Um, so there'll be multiple process things happening at once. Um, with these changes, the first thing to do is order updated signs for the resident streets. Um, because that'll take two to four weeks and hopefully there won't be. It won't be so many signs that it will, um. That we'll have to bid out for it, I don't think it will be, because it's a smaller order.
There's no like, I've seen stickers on top of, I know it's not ideal, but like stickers on top of signs.
Yeah, I'm not doing stickers, we want this done well and, um, I think, you know, that's just sloppy out the gate. I'll be hearing about for the rest of my life, um, no, well, we, we have to get the right signs. Um, so what are signs, um, the other things we need to get done is. Our T-two system, so there's this amazing system that we are, you know, purchasing that. that connects our meters, the the mobile meters with our kiosks, with our parking enforcement devices. So that the officers will be able to track how long someone has paid for parking on Main Street. Um I possibly, they can do this. We could sell the permits through that system. And then officers could scan for permits too. So just scan license plates and it would tell you whether or not they have a permit. Um and can be parked there. But it would also let us sell the permits through that web port hole. Um and then we would just have to ship them. So that could save the clerk's office, the whole application process. Potentially, so I'm gonna look into that immediately. Yeah, so order, all the little arrows tell you what comes first. Or order signage, um we have to sign the contracts for the T two system and enforcement. So right on the agenda next is um reviewing the contract with the rider that our legal team prepared um for the enforcement systems, the handheld devices. Um it'll take them four to six weeks to set up that system, which basically will sort of get all the all the streets, what the rules are, where permits are, where meters are, when meters should be on. And then connect it to all the other systems, the park mobile system um and our um kiosks. That will also allow our kiosk to get put into place. We have the kiosks here in the village, but they're, they need to be, you know, turned on and the whole system needs to be turned on and they need to be installed. So once we've signed the contracts for those two systems, uh we've already signed the contract for the kiosks. Then those will start building and connecting and Michelle and I will work with um to make sure it's all kind of seamless and comes together. We'll be ordering the resident permit stickers. So those are the stickers that Alex designed for us. Um and after those come in, as soon as those come in, we want to advertise, sell and deliver those to residents. Because we want the residents to have those on their cars before Main Street meters go on. Um and before we put the resident permit signs up on side streets, so people don't have panic attacks. Um so that has to happen. As soon as the residents have gotten their permits, or at least we've given them, you know, three weeks to do that. Then we'll be installing the signage for the resident streets first. Um and then for Main Street meters and get those kiosks, kiosks installed and turned on, which that takes a day to do the kiosks. The signage will take a little bit longer, but I think Bugzina's team can screw signs in in maybe as short as a week, but everything takes longer than it seems it should.
Depending on what what else they have to hit that week.
That's right. There could be snow for all we know. Um they're they're getting all the poles in so that if the ground freezes, that that piece of the work is already done. So the poles are in in place and all ready to go. They'll just have to screw signs up. Our police department will have to train all of the officers on how to use the enforcement devices. Um and I'm gonna work with Larry to create a parking enforcement plan um that will be communicated to all the officers. So we need um them to all know, like where do they need to be monitoring for parking, you know, what days? When should they be protecting resident permit streets and and monitoring that? Because they're not used to just going around and enforcing parking and we will have parking. We do have a parking enforcement officer that specifically does that, that, you know, um should be able to hire for the days that the meters are on and then parking. So that'll be their job specifically and then the officer on duty may be able to fill in and help out with that.
It's important, Eliza, if I might tap in here for a second to note that that we are, as a board, communicating strongly to the officer in charge the need for officers to be enforcing. They're not going to be able to enforce every minute of their shift, right? Because they have other issues they have to deal with. But when they're, when they're available to enforce, that is it. And I I hope folks have noticed the pickup on the weekends um of ticketing to officers that who have been on in the busiest days have been picking up. Um and and that needs to stay strong, the enforcement. But we're, we've been very clear in our communication about that is my point.
Right, and and we're gonna have a plan for that um in place when this whole system turns on. So once residents have their permits on, their stickers on their cars, the signs are in place. Main Street kiosks and meter systems are turned on. We'll have the T two team test all the systems together and make sure that everything is working seamlessly. And once we have that, you know, approved, we will turn the system on and we'll be able to start this whole thing. I don't expect that to happen before the new year, so this is gonna be like a soft pitch in January when there really isn't much of an emergency and it'll be, you know, maybe the easiest time to start it for the residents comfort, but um I think that's just probably the best that we can do i- i- if we can even get it in January. Because all of these things just take a lot of administrates, administrative time and moving parts and communicating with a lot of people in the backend to make sure we have appointments to get meters installed and things like that.
Good.
Out to the public will also be a piece that I'm thinking about, but might be worth um putting on the timeline of like both.
I need a helper for that.
Yeah.
I need a helper, because that piece I could do if I wasn't doing all this other stuff. But um so if if we have anybody on our team or if, you know, maybe, I don't know, Alex wants to volunteer, but having.
He might, he might have retired. Village volunteer, but I, I've got to help.
Okay, great. Yeah, finding finding ways to communicate to the public. All of this will be very important, absolutely.
And I think it's like residents and like residents of what the system is and what they need to do and then public.
Right, and we want to do that through social media, pages on the website, um email blats. You know, this is what to expect. Here's what's coming. Um time to buy your permits now, all of that. Um where can you park, when? All of that, I think, will be really important to communicate to make this go smoothly as well.
Happy to.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Something also, you just made me think of that, um you know, just looking at this timeline and and so on, um. I mean, realistically, as you noted, it's, you know, it's now basically no November, so we're talking about like functionally two months if we want to start this in January and keeping in mind that if we're gonna have the permits start January. That would be ideal, because then otherwise we'll be what's the word when you take out money for prorating it already, uh the from the, from the start, you know?
We could start the residence before we start the metering, right? And it still kind of protects residential parking on weekends.
Yes, that's true.
The permanence, like you, even if we don't have the metering, so.
True, and and that should be first, absolutely. We should have our residents set and settled. They should have their permits in hand. Those signs should be in place before the Main Street permits and kiosks and meters go on. So that definitely will be first.
That's only dependent on the signage and the enforcement tools, right? That's not, none of the other stuff holds that up.
Well, and all the admin.
Communication, yeah.
Through Jeff's office. He's looking at, you guys can't see it, but he's looking at it.
I I can imagine.
Is he smiling really?
If I can manage to find a system where all of these applications go through a website and payments go through a website and the village collects funds and all we have to do is mail permits to the residents, I will make that happen, Jeff, I swear. It will help.
Maybe we need a part timer that just comes in January that does permits.
Well, we.
Everybody at the great garbage fiasco of twenty twenty two. And this will, this 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 will.
And 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 we came through and no one cares about their garbage can anymore. It'll be fine.
But the color.
It'll be fine. Okay, what else?
I I agree with Laura that you could do the residential parking program in advance of the metering.
Right.
Probably, I don't think, you know, it's always been looked at as tying the two together, but.
As soon as it's ready, honestly, because that doesn't require any technology at all, other than we don't have to sell it through technology, but so definitely that would be the first thing to get moving.
I, to Tweed's point, I think having that rolling for sales in December and onboard in January would be ideal.
Yeah, alright, well, we can aim for that. No promises.
I lost it, sorry. I had a, I had a question related to that, but I lost it.
Alright.
Oh, I, Jeff, this is a process question from an ordinance point of view. So 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 what we have to do next? Eliza is still going through and doing the the cleanup. There were a number of comments related editorial concerns. She needs to get those in. The board needs to review the final version again before resolution and adoption. How do we, how do we stage this so that the um implementation? We have to pass this to get the meters. But we won't be ready to roll with the meters on the day we pass this. So is there a way to structure the resolution that adopts the chapter? And implementation begins when all systems are in place? It's not a very elegant question.
Like the residential parking program was legislated back in two thousand fifteen. Implementation was not part of the code, so for the metering, implementation doesn't need to be part of the code either.
On the books, but.
Yeah, you don't need to put in the code that as of January first, people are gonna start off to pay the meters.
Yeah, Kathleen, I I assure you, there's tons of things in our code right now that is not, has not been implemented at all.
Well, I I, yes, I'm aware. I'm just trying to, I'm thinking about that, how we're communicating out with the public. But I guess that's separate from adoption of the code. That's a different process. The code, it, in other words, we have to be clear with the public that the day we pass this resolution doesn't mean tomorrow everything happens. Here's the, here's the time.
Yeah, it can happen as soon as that, but it doesn't have to happen then.
Right, the law goes into effect as soon as we file it with the Secretary of State.
Right.
Implementation.
And enforcement happens when we're ready.
Okay, just just being clear for the, for folks following along at home. So have we hit the things we need to hit, Eliza?
That's all the decisions um that we had on actual changes to the code proposal. So the next step would be for me to finish up the draft adjustments to address these issues, um as well as the, you know, periods and and word here and there comments that we got in on the actual writing of the code and editing of the code. Um and then getting a draft to Jeff. Do we need to pass it through legal again? Do I send it to the trustees? What's the process after that?
I think we should look at it again to double check your work, because you're managing a lot of I's and T's.
There's nothing that's been discussed or addressed tonight that I think needs to go back to the attorneys from a legal nature. I mean, it's just for, the attorneys have no say on the hour, you know, it's.
Yeah, none of this is gonna be a legal problem, so.
So.
Um alright, so I'll make those adjustments. I'll send everyone, the board and and Jeff, the updated um draft for a resolution hopefully next week.
See how it goes.
Yeah, once you have the draft, I mean, send it out to the board and if the board feels it's ready, then we'll do a resolution, a resolution to pass the local law next week.
Okay.
Between the week after and at this point, it's.
Somewhere soon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. There are, there are questions that were raised by folks in email that um I've been, I've been responding to people with with particular questions. Um I haven't finished doing that. Um but those that that I can address, I will. Um but we've, we've hit we've hit what we needed to hit, I think. So shall we move on to the up safety contract?
Yes.
Okay, but I I know that's out of order on the agenda, but it just makes sense to keep it in the flow.
Yeah, I also just um let no Peggy, let um Peggy from Jewel know that.
Okay.
We're turning to this soon, so it works well.
Alright, so the uh review of the up safety contract, all the trustees have been given a copy of the contract. Um as well as a copy of the rider that our legal team advised we adopt. And and has been passed to up safety for their review. They passed back some amendments. Um so it's edited, been edited back and forth. The rider has between the two legal teams of up safety and the village. Um there were a couple of points that they didn't agree on and it was really more, they weren't legal issues as much as business and risk management decisions um that the trustees need to make. So um those points were um our legal team preferred a month-to-month contract um with locked terms, but um T two requires a three-year contract um because of the time it takes to negotiate and update contracts. Um and because we can cancel at any time, so um we're not locked into this. If it's not working, we can just cancel it. Um I I think there are benefits to being locked into a three-year contract. The rates don't change and again, we don't have to like, they're already changing their contract for next year, so they have a longer contract. So the next time we negotiate this contract, it'll be a new contract, it'll be different, it'll be longer. So we'll have to go through this whole legal process again. I wouldn't want to do that on a monthly basis. So I I would, for that reason, accept this rider as it is. Um the other issue was that um UP, Up Safety requires a thirty to forty day lead time um from the date when the contract is signed and they have it in hand um for them to build our back systems with T two. That's the system that connects park mobile, enforcement, meter, kiosks. Um and our village, you know, treasurer to all of that um with the payment system. So they say thirty to forty-five days is what it takes. Our attorney thinks that it should be ten days. Given the length of time it takes us to do all of this, I can only imagine, and I would not expect more than thirty or less than thirty days. So I'm fine with their thirty to forty day um lead time amount. Um and then our legal team would like an agreement that requires T two up safety to offset their fees for the downtime. So if if, for instance, the system had to be, went down for any reason, um our legal team feels that we should be reimbursed for any days that are lost. And our treasurer estimates that'd be like sixteen dollars a day, so not a lot of money. And um up safety disagreed with that because they have three backup servers. So the minute one goes down, another one pops in place. Um they said in, you know, the past decade and a half, it's never gone down. So it's it's just not a a likely thing that's gonna happen. And even if it did, our our officers could still write tickets by hand.
Yeah, right.
Stopping us from actually functioning in any way, so I would um propose that we accept T two's terms on that one as well. So um any discussion? T two's terms on that one as well. So um, any discussion?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that also because in our process of identifying T two, we did speak with other municipalities. Who work with them under the contract um as it was and are very, very happy with them. Um, and we've, you know, through your effort, Eliza, you've managed to move them closer to what. We would have had ideally. Um, and I think that we've landed in a good place, a good functional place. I'm, I'm comfortable with this. Others?
Mine as well.
Alright, I, I'd make a motion to approve the T two. Approve the mayor to sign the T two contract with the attached rider. Um. Immediately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? Okay, thanks, Eliza. Just a yeoman's task, all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome job. Glad to get it done.
Yeah, but get, even getting to right here. Just remember the quote that we read that the opening of the public hearing was nineteen eighty-nine. I was a senior in high school. Okay, um, so we have Peggy Kurtz with us here from Jewel. So we'll move on to that agenda item. Hi Peggy.
Hi, glad to be with you.
Well, we're glad to have you. Tell us about what's up.
Uh, well, I don't want to go back unnecessarily over everything.
Or maybe we want Laura to, Laura to lead us in?
Yeah, I can introduce it. And then um Peggy from Jewel is here to answer questions if we have any. So um, and, and Peggy, if I say something wrong, feel free to, to jump in. But essentially Jewel is our, um, our operator of our. Um, community choice aggregation. They notified us of legislation that's um. Uh, at the state level that would codify um community twice aggregation. It's our state's exceptional in the fact that it's not in state law, but it can exist. Um, and so this would, uh, this would codify a law and then would also enable um some particular pieces around allowing. Um, municipalities to dedicate solar credits to low-income residents, which um would lower their. You know, we know that from community solar that that lowers your bills and it would be a way to designate those funds uh for low-income residents, which I think. Is, you know, something that we support in terms of affordability and it also allows municipalities to work on local, to support. Um, local renewable generation and to really drive that um in the state. Um, so uh it's, it's sponsored by Senator Mercom um and has sponsors at the house level. And they're collecting these um letters of support uh from municipalities to really try to push this uh to be adopted this year. Peggy, is that okay? Any, any corrections?
No, you did, you did a very good job. I just want to clarify in case it wasn't clear. That what would be codified doesn't directly have to do with Cold Spring. It's basically that out of the ten states that have community choice aggregation programs established in them. New York State is the only state in which CCA programs were not established through legislation. But rather through regulation. So the PSC established the program in twenty sixteen, but it was never codified into law. So this would do that. But the problem is that not having it codified in law leaves it a bit more vulnerable. To kind of the vagaries of the regulators. And what we're seeing is while CCA programs are thriving. There are some ways in which they're running into obstacles into long delays in decisions. Contradictory decisions and regulatory reversals. And specifically, one of the things that we may have mentioned, I, I know, you know, somebody else did the outreach initially in, in Cold Spring. Was um, community choice, uh, I'm sorry, uh. Community choice solar, um, what is, is basically, some people call it opt-out community solar, which is easier than. The um, the, they opt in community solar, there's no contracts. It's also can be dedicated. To, to prioritize low to moderate income households. So the financial benefits go to the households that are the most in need. And that program has been held up for the last literally two years. Um, and there are also communities that would like to enter into power purchase agreements with projects. Again, that they, where they can dedicate the benefits to the low to moderate income households and they've been held up from doing that. And I could give you examples if you want. But this is basically to, it's very straightforward. It really would establish the program in law.
Peggy, who is the assembly sponsor?
Um, Fred Teal from Long Island.
Oh.
Yeah, Southampton is one of the communities that has been waiting to um. To put in place a, a, a community solar, a large project on top of a landfill. Um, that they would like to dedicate to the low to moderate income households. There's also projects like that in Buffalo and in Rochester. Um, there are other, other, many other municipalities that are waiting to move ahead on these projects, but have really been held up.
Oh, go ahead. Just to say, we don't have any of that planned, but it, um, I think it would potentially enable us to do in the future. And it's just supporting fellow municipalities and our clean energy goals.
We have a, the deli senator sponsoring, um, and Senator Harkam. I'm really excited to support this.
Great, thank you.
Others?
Yep, I absolutely support it. I think it's a great um thing to be a part of and yeah, wanna see it happen.
Would you like to make a motion, Laura?
Great. Um, so uh I make a motion to adopt the statement of support. Um, for the Clean Energy Partnership Act.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great. We'll get that off to you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Laura, for texting me and you were.
Should we send it to you, the letter?
Yes, please do. And then what we're doing is assembling the letters of support. We will be sending them. It might be that we'll come back to you to ask you to do something, you know, to send it directly to your senator, state senator in assemblyman. But for right now, we're just, we're just collecting letters of support.
Okay.
Thank you very much and, and have a good evening.
Two.
Okay.
Um, next is minutes nine twenty twenty-three. I have no edits.
No, no edits there. Uh, I'll um make a motion to approve the minutes nine twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, and are, who, is there anyone who is ineligible to vote on this set, Jeff?
Oh.
Hey. Catherine.
Okay. So um all in favor of the four of us?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. Okay. Um, the, the next item that we added was the Coast Guard Anchorage. This is, this is brand new to me. Um, we got a communication yesterday from Senator Rollison. Letting us know that um the Coast Guard seems to be going back on the commitment it made in two thousand seventeen. To not expand anchorage for large vessels, including barges um up through Newber- Newburgh. Um, you'll remember probably that there was a huge public outcry about the anchorage of large vessels along Hudson River communities. Um, and it seems as if we're back in that fight again. Um, so Senator Rollison has asked um. If the village would be willing to, to pass a resolution, support, su- supporting him in his efforts to stop the Coast Guard from doing that. Um, I don't have a resolution tonight. Before we make a resolution, I wanted to see if the board felt comfortable. If, if you would like to support Senator Rollison's effort. I, I know I would.
I absolutely support that.
Okay, any opposition to it? Okay, so I'll work on that and get it to us as quickly as I can, hopefully for next week.
Great.
Um, all we have left is public comment. And Patricia, you've joined us just in time. Hi Patty. Do you have? Anything to add or ask?
Unmute. We can't hear you, Patty.
Patty, you're muted.
That's okay.
Still muted.
Okay. Feel free to call tomorrow if you, if you, nice to see you. Um, anything for Michael? Okay, well, in that case, um, unless anyone has anything else, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for accommodating us remotely tonight. And Eliza, thank you again for all your hard work.
Yeah, feel better.
See ya.
Bye.
Hey, wow, that's so.
Right.